The meeting of the regular meeting of the Gardner City Council will come to order. Today is Monday, October 4th, 2021. The clerk will please call the roll. Counsel Boone?
Present.
Counsel Boudreaux?
Present.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Present.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Present.
Counsel General Howard?
Present.
Counsel Graves?
Present.
Counsel Harder?
Present.
Counsel Matt?
Present.
Counsel Tyros?
Present.
Counsel Walsh?
Present.
President Kozinski? Present. Please rise to recite the opening prayer and say the pledge of allegiance.
Almighty God, we thank you for bringing us together this evening, inspiring us toward the deeds of sound decisions, and direct us toward the healing of the good city government. We pray that you do us to protect all the people of our city, and so that God can inspire us that we may deliver in unity and harmony. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is anyone here recording tonight's meeting? We'll begin with the reading and approval of the minutes of the June 21st, 2021 regular meeting and July 6th, 2021 joint public hearing with the planning board.
Madam President.
Counsel Ron Cormier?
To make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes of those two meetings and accept them as presented.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Walsh to waive the reading of the minutes and accept them as presented. Is there discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. There are no public hearings this evening. Communications from the mayor, appointments. Item number 10531, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Cheryl Boss to the position of cultural council member for term expiring September 14th, 2024. Report from the finance committee.
The finance committee is favorable on this. This is a reappointment. It's an unpaid, so therefore there's no issue with her being appointed to this. It's a two-term limit by statute and should be replacing Rachel Waters on this cultural council. Therefore, I move that we confirm the appointment.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Walsh to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item 10532, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Jessica DeRoy to the position of cultural council member for term expiring September 14th, 2024. Report from the finance committee.
This is a new appointment. Mr. Roy is our fairly newly appointed economic development coordinator, and she wishes to get more involved in the community if this were not opportunity. The mayor felt that she could have. We were in favor of this, and I make the motion that we confirm the appointment.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Walsh to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item 10533, a measure authorizing an intermunicipal agreement between City of Gardner and Town of Ashburnham Animal Control Services. Report from the finance committee.
Report from the finance committee is favorable. This is a new agreement for animal control services, similar to what we have with Westminster, with the town of Ashburnham. There is a typographical error in paragraph 12 of this, of the agreement, where it recites veteran services officer rather than animal control officer, veteran services agent rather than animal control officer. So, once it's on the floor, I'm going to move that it be amended by substituting one for the other in paragraph 12. The, the mayor felt that this was something that could be easily absorbed by the services, the services, by the services that we currently provide for our city as well as, as others. And finance committee is favorable, and I move the authorization.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to authorize the agreement. Is there discussion on the motion? Counsel Walsh?
Yes, I move that the agreement be amended by, in paragraph 12, by substituting the words "animal control officer" in place of the words "veteran services agent."
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to amend the order by substituting "animal control officer" in place of "veteran service agent" in paragraph 12. Is there discussion on the amendment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Is there discussion? So, motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Cormier to authorize the intermunicipal agreement with the amendment in paragraph 12. Is there discussion on the motion? Counsel Graves?
Thank you, President Kozinski. I'm reading the statute, which is Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 4A, and this will relate to, I guess this is a question for a statement and a question for the finance committee through the chair. If we look at paragraph 12, which we just looked at, of the proposed intermunicipal agreement, I don't know, I don't think it complies with the statute, because the statute says this, and again, this is section 4A of chapter 40. "All agreements put into effect under this section shall provide sufficient financial safeguards for all participants, including but not limited to accurate and comprehensive records of services performed, costs incurred, and reimbursements and contributions received, the performance of regular audits of such records, and provisions for the offices responsible for the agreement to give appropriate performance bonds. The agreement shall also require that periodic financial statements be issued to all participants." I don't see that in this agreement, and the statute requires it, so I don't know if the finance committee picked up on that or talked about it. The other comment I have is that in the second line, chapter 40 just says section, should have a 4A there. And the other question I had was, who's picking the senior animal control officer and animal control officers? Paragraph C says it's shared, but who's picking, or who's selecting that officer? So, that's it. Thank you, President Kozinski.
Thank you, Counsel Graves. Counsel Walsh?
We received correspondence from the mayor, who was unable to attend the finance committee meeting, but followed up with correspondence on Friday, I believe it was. And he says, I'm not sure if this will respond to the counselor's questions or not, but "As a reminder of the structure of these agreements, the individual towns will budget their own benefit line items that will be given to the veterans of their communities. The amounts included in these agreements are consideration for the time that the veteran's agent's salary is used for the work in their communities, the accounts payable processes for the veteran services with the auditors and treasurers of each of the towns participating." If, I don't know if the mayor wants to address the topic.
Mayor Nicholson?
Thank you very much, Madam President. This is a renewal of an existing animal control contract that we've had for several years with the town of Ashburnham. We have regional veteran services with the towns of Ashburnham, Westminster, and Hubbardston. Hubbardston expires next fiscal year. We just did Westminster's at the last council meeting. The way these contracts work is Counsel Graves is correct, that law is required, but where the state law is an object that we are all required to follow. It doesn't have to be listed in the contract document, because that's required to be followed, and our auditors reach out to their accounting departments. Since towns have accounting departments, cities have auditing departments. That's how that process is followed. The city council confirmed my appointment of senior animal control officer of Princeton, Salerno, I believe, two meetings ago. The way that that works is they are Gardner, City of Gardner employees, appointed by the mayor, confirmed by the council for a term of one year, and they perform their duties of animal control officers and animal inspectors in the towns that we regionalize the services for. The towns pay us for their services, but any costs incurred for work in those towns are budgeted for those towns. So, for instance, if there's an animal that needs to be disposed of, or a hearing that needs to be held that requires cost of notification, those are budgeted for by the towns themselves. We, the benefits in the agreements towards the city are simply consideration for the time that our animal control officers are in those municipalities performing their work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Nicholson. Further discussion? Counsel Graves?
Yes, thank you, President Kozinski. I'll just follow up on that. I'm reading the statute, so I heard what the mayor said, but the statute says, "All agreements," which this is, this is an agreement, "shall include that information." This agreement doesn't. And also, what the mayor said about, it simply doesn't include it. Now I know, after listening to the mayor, that it doesn't. And listening to the mayor about who is the, who's going to choose the, the boss here, the animal control officer, that what the mayor says is not in this agreement either. Now, I understand that maybe we did this before, and maybe I was asleep at the wheel, and I didn't notice this stuff back then, but I'm noticing it now. And those are problems, as I see them. Thank you, President Kozinski.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
If you voted yes, please raise your right hand.
Seven say yes, raise your hand.
Yep. If you voted no, please raise your right hand.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, eight yeses, three nos, the motion passes. You can lower your hands. Item number 10534, a measure authorizing an intermunicipal agreement between City of Gardner and Town of Ashburnham Veteran Services. Report from the finance committee?
Report from the finance committee is favorable. This is a agreement that will provide the town of Ashburnham with veteran services through the veteran services department by the city. As, as you know, our prior, our prior director has retired, and the mayor has just recently appointed on a temporary basis a new person who has prior experience in other communities, working in veteran services department in Worcester and in, at least two other communities. I forget exactly which ones. The, the, the town of Ashburnham and the, in interviews, the appointee was made aware of the fact that there will be a few additional veterans included with these, this and the next two intermunicipal agreements. And it was, given the number that we currently have in the city, it was, it was concluded that the Veterans Office in Gardner would be, very easily be able to manage additional people in, from the other communities. And this is for a three-year term with 2% increase per year. The finance committee was favorable to authorizing the agreement, and I move it, move the authorization.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to authorize the agreement. Is there discussion on the motion? Counsel Ron Cormier?
I did make note that the mayor has appointed somebody in the 60-day trial period, and I think today we received the notification that that appointment, that he committed to us soon for confirmation. And in this case, with Ashburnham, it only increases below by about 10 on average. And I noticed with the other two communities, less than 10 between the other two communities of the forest. This is still considerable. The last time when we were back, he, Mr. Bucel, at the time, was handling that and felt that this would be fine here, so I'm very much in favor of this, because we are servicing, not only our people, but governments in the communities around us, being a good neighbor in the sense.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion? Counsel Graves?
Thank you, President Kozinski. I have the same concerns with this intermunicipal agreement, because we're doing it under the same statute that I just talked about. It has the same problems, the same absence of information. Also, and I don't know, the mayor probably knows, but I don't. He, his letter says, "Under Massachusetts General Law, cities must employ full-time veterans agents; however, towns do not." I don't know if the, if the dispositive phrase in there is "full-time" or not, but when I, when I read the statute, which is chapter 115 this time, which probably should be referenced in the preamble, but anyways, chapter 115 says, "The mayors of cities and the selectmen of towns, other than cities and towns, which become part of a district authorized by the second paragraph of this section, shall," so this is, "the mayors of cities and selectmen of towns shall cause to be established and maintained in their respective cities and towns a department for purposes of furnishing such information, et cetera, et cetera." And then it goes on to say, "Departments of veteran services and the officer in charge thereof shall be known as the Director of Veteran Services, and shall be appointed in a city by the mayor with the approval of the city council, and in a town by the selectmen." So, it looks to me, if this is, if chapter 115 applies, and I think it does, then it looks like the towns have to, the city has to establish a Director of Veteran Services, and the town does too. And I guess I have the same question, and that is, who selects? And what if we don't agree? And it looks like it's clashing, disagreement is clashing with chapter 115. I might be wrong about it. I just figured I'd bring that up, because it doesn't look like it's consistent. Other than that, that's it. Thank you, President Kozinski.
Thank you, Counsel Graves. Mayor Nicholson?
Thank you very much, Madam President. To address that concern, the key words are "full-time," for instance, for example, when I was the town administrator of Rutland, we had an on-call veterans agent who was responding to the veterans' items in that town, because the way that the Department of Veteran Services at the Commonwealth level, and that the different regulatory agencies have interpreted the law, is that cities, due to their larger population size, will tend to have a larger veterans population, which will require the services of a full-time salaried veterans agent, whereas towns who may have one or two veterans would be, wouldn't be financially feasible in all cases to have a full-time employee service one or two veterans when those calls may not come in as an as needed basis, because the benefits do vary substantially between prescription reimbursement benefits, death benefits, funeral reimbursement benefits, and things of those natures. And all of those are processed through this veteran service agent. So, that's why cities are required to have a full-time staff veterans agent. However, every city and town in the Commonwealth are required to have a veterans agent. And these regional agreements for veteran services, veteran services are very common in the Commonwealth. In Franklin County, there's a veterans agent who services close to 15 different municipalities. Drake, it has a district of, I believe, five or six different municipalities. What it is, is this contract, these intermunicipal agreements are the towns basically saying that they are going to utilize Gardner's Veterans Service Office to administer those services to those communities. So, for instance, with Westminster's Veteran Service Office, because we did that intermunicipal agreement in the previous meeting, that would be something that their website lists our veterans agent as their official's veteran service office. So, if you go to Westminster's website on the Veterans Service page, it brings you to Gardner's contact information and lists the office hours for the agent here in Gardner City Hall. There's certainly times where something may come up in a special circumstance, in which case the veteran service agent may have to travel for an appointment as those special circumstances come up. However, the veterans agent is appointed by the mayor, confirmed by the city council for a term of one year under the statute, and these agreements are that this town's, the town's acknowledgement of Gardner's agent being their agent as well, and that's common practice with the Commonwealth Department of Veteran Services and different other veteran service agencies across the Commonwealth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Nicholson. Further discussion? Counsel Boone, did you?
Thank you, Madam President. Counsel Graves has brought up various items regarding statutes, and I don't know enough about them. I'm not an attorney. I just don't know if we should postpone, you know, we all want to support the veterans, of course we do. But if we don't have the language right, why, why are we automatically voting it in? So, I'm having a hard time with that, and the same with the previous one. So, unless, I don't know, the finance committee or others can tell me better, or Mr. Mayor, why don't we postpone it and put the right language in it? Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Boone. Further discussion? Counsel Graves?
Yes, thank you, President Kozinski. I'm going to support this one, because of the critical nature of it and the importance of it. And I'm hoping that if the statute's language, which should be in there, isn't, I think the mayor and the selectmen can easily amend it under paragraph 10, because it's such an important contract for several, well, more than just not our veterans, but veterans in the other communities. I'm going to support it. Thank you, President Kozinski.
Thank you, Counsel Graves. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes. Item 10535, a measure authorizing an intermunicipal agreement between City of Gardner and Town of Hubbardston Veteran Services. Report from the finance committee?
This is a, this is a similar provision for intermunicipal agreement, veteran services with the town of Hubbardston. Finance committee was favorable to the, to the agreement and for the authorization, so I move the authorization.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to authorize the agreement. Is there discussion on the motion? Counsel Graves?
Thank you, President Kozinski. I'm just going to ditto my prior comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Graves. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Item 10536, a measure authorizing an intermunicipal agreement between City of Gardner and Town of Princeton Veteran Services. Report from the finance committee?
Report from the finance committee is favorable. This is a new agreement with the town of Princeton for veteran services in the same manner as we've just reviewed with Ashburnham, Hubbardston, and the existing one with Westminster. So, the finance committee is favorable to the authorization and to the agreement, and I move the authorization.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to authorize the agreement. Is there discussion on the motion? Counsel Bujo?
Thank you, Madam President. I will be abstaining from this matter due to a professional relationship. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Bujo. Counsel Bujo will be abstaining. Further discussion? Counsel Graves?
Thank you, President Kozinski. So, I'm going to ditto my prior comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Graves. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion passes. Borders. Item number 10537, an order authorizing payment of prior year unpaid bill for landfill monitoring from FY 2020 run. Report from the finance committee?
Finance committee is favorable on this. This is a prior year contract with CDC Engineering to provide the monitoring of the landfill that is, it's a requirement of the city tax. Unfortunately, it didn't get posted into the municipal system. When they tried to contact the city, they kept emailing a person who was no longer employed in that department. Corrections have been made to the system. Training has been provided to the individuals, so that this will not slip out of the municipal system. We didn't worry about that. Funds are available for the landfill closure account, and therefore, we're favorable on this, and I make a motion that we allow the unpaid bill to be paid.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Walsh to authorize the payment. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes. Petitions, applications, communications, et cetera. Item 10538, an order relative to the November 2nd, 2021 city election. Report from the finance committee?
Finance committee was favorable. We will receive the copy of the city election order, and I make a motion that we approve the order as presented.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Walsh to approve the order as presented. Is there discussion on the motion? Counsel Graves?
Thank you, President Kozinski. I don't know the gentleman who's running for ward two, but I, I think I heard his name was Danny Heath, and I believe, I forgot to print out, but I think, what, our printout has an L in his name, as if his name is Dana Health, so I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Counsel Graves. The city clerk will make note of that and make that change. Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion passes. Reports of standing committees. Finance committee, item 10469, an ordinance to amend code of the City of Gardner, chapter 171 thereof entitled personnel, by amending section 14 holidays designated section 44, compensated in lieu of paid holidays, and section 60 holidays with pay. Report from the finance committee?
Report from the finance committee is to remove this from the calendar. It's been on our calendar for a lengthy period of time. It has to do with a conflict in the proposed ordinance that has yet to be resolved. The mayor and the human resources director have, the mayor's request to leave to withdraw, I missed that, I'm sorry. So, the mayor's request to leave to withdraw until such time as they can decide what language they'd like to propose, and presumably it'll be here before next June, and, and we can anticipate that. So, if the, the finance committees originally had moved, was going to move to, or recommend removal from the calendar, but the mayor has requested leave to withdraw, so I move that we grant the mayor leave to withdraw.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to grant a leave to withdraw on this item from the mayor. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion passes. Item 10484, a measure authorizing a solar energy pilot agreement with BCC Solar Energy Advantage. Report from the finance committee?
Report from the finance committee is to grant the mayor leave to withdraw that he's requested by correspondent stated October 1st. So, I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to, to grant the mayor's leave to withdraw on this item. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion passes. Public Safety Committee, item 10471, a communication from the Traffic Commission relative to an ordinance to amend code of the City of Gardner, chapter 600, section 24 thereof entitled Parking Prohibited on Certain Streets. Report from the Public Safety Committee. Counsel Craig Cormier?
Yes, we met last week. We discussed this item. We are close to working out a method with the city clerk to get some feedback from the residents of the area, and therefore, we ask for more time on this item again, please.
If there is no objection, the committee will be granted more time? The committee will be granted more time. Item 10517, a communication from the Traffic Commission relative to an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, chapter 600, section 6, section 54 thereof entitled obedience to isolate, to isolated stop signs. This went to first printing previously. Is there a motion?
I moved for second and final printing. Second.
Motion made by Counsel Craig Cormier, seconded by Counsel Tyros for, to move this to the second and final printing. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion passes. Item 10526, an order authorizing $69,258.95 payment of prior year operating expenditure. Report from the Public Safety Committee. Counsel Craig Cormier?
Yep, we did have a chance to meet on this. We got input from both the Health Department and the Law Department. This is a valid charge. It was a pre-charge in May for June services. Those services were provided and were not billed a second time. There was just some confusion in the Health Department at the time, so they did not pay the invoice before that fiscal period ended. So, this is a valid charge. There's no double billing. In that case, I move that, move the order. Second.
Motion made by Counsel Craig Cormier, seconded by Counsel Tyros to authorize the payment. Is there discussion on the Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say no? The motion passes. Item 10529, an application by Henry Haywood Memorial Hospital for a flammable license located at 242 Green Street. We did have a public hearing on this prior. Report from the Public Safety Committee, Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes, we had a chance to speak with the chief of the Fire Department, Chief Lagoye, last week on this item. He has spoken to Ty and Bond. He had several questions that he asked them, and he received satisfactory answers on all of these. He feels comfortable at this time that we could approve this application. From here, it would go on to the state for approval for, at that level. So this is just the first of several steps that this has to go through. But with the chief's approval, we unanimously moved in favor to approve this measure. So I move this, move this application for approval. Second.
Motion made by Counselor Craig Cormier, seconded by Counselor Tyros, to approve the application. Is there a discussion on the motion? Counselor Walsh?
Yes, I took the opportunity because of the very lengthy engineering reports that were submitted in support of this application by Ty and Bond, to inquire of our engineering department about whether they had had the opportunity to review the reports and address any concerns they may have had. I spoke with our city engineer, Mr. Coughlin. He indicated that not only had he reviewed it, but it had a, our on-call engineering, our alternate, I think, on-call engineering consultant, Fussin O'Neil, review it from several perspectives. There was some concern that it didn't provide for a containment, but in fact, LP gas, if it leaks, doesn't leak, it disperses its gas. And so there wasn't, there isn't a need for a containment facility. But I was, there was some concerns that I had about the fact that part of the platform for the tank will be on a slope, and the engineering firms, people had addressed that topic as well, and were satisfied that measures were being taken to insurance, that it was adequate. So I'm, we've, the engineers are certainly in a better position to address those things than I am, I feel, and they have, I was concerned about whether they had, and they have, and so I'll be in favor of the application.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say no? Motion passes. Unfinished business and matters for reconsideration, item number 10530, a measure to amend the rules of the Gardner City Council establishing Chapter 21 entitled Public Comments. We will be scheduling a meeting for the Committee of the Whole to further discuss this item. Moving to new business, Counselor Mack?
I have no new business this evening, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Boudreaux?
Just a quick moment on the item that we just said we were doing a Committee of the Whole meeting on, and it's, I'm speaking for myself and only myself, whereas I do believe in the measure. I wanted people to know, and I did talk to the council president about this, that I am going to work with Counselor Boone on getting some language drafted that appeases Counselor Walsh and Counselor Graves. They are two attorneys and two longstanding members of our council, so I would like to take their info into consideration, which I spoke with the council president, and we will do over the next week and get it in, in short order. Other than that, I want to let it be known that only on my own accord, and I'm speaking for only myself, this is not something that I expect to be taken just as-is, here we go, that's what the rule is now. If this led to a public comment period once a quarter, or sometimes, or if requested, that's something that I would be happy to see, and something that I would advocate for. And noting the timeframe, if people, if counselors need time to talk to their constituents, to talk to the people that would be eligible to make public comment, I wouldn't even be opposed to saying, hey, you know what, it's going to be January before we know it, let's let the next council take it up during the rules debate. So those are just a couple of things that I felt that I wanted to get off my chest regarding that measure that I co-sponsored with Counselor Boone. I believe it would do a great measure of transparency for the constituents in the City of Gardner, and I am proud to have co-sponsored it, whether it be something along the terms of what we wrote, or something completely different. I look forward to speaking about it. Thank you. That is all, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Harden?
Nothing new this week, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Craig Cormier?
I have no new business this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Tyros?
No new business this evening? Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Graves?
No new city council business. Thank you, President Kaczynski.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Dernalowicz?
No new business this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Boone?
Oh, pretty quiet this evening. No new business. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Walsh?
Nothing new for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ron Cormier?
Just a reminder to all, this is breast cancer awareness, I think, I was asked to remind ourselves and everyone listening.
Thank you, Counselor, and I have no new business. I will entertain a motion on the floor to adjourn after the closing prayer.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Boudreaux, seconded by Counselor Mack, to adjourn after the closing prayer. The clerk, I'm so sorry. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say no? Motion passes. Almighty Father, who sees so well, as we turn, we thank thee for the opportunity of your deliberation and actions during the course of this meeting. Blessed are all who are gathered here, and the people who represent us, we are, and devout and faithful to our common welfare, until our next meeting. Amen. The meeting stands adjourned. Thank you, everyone.